Good morning. Welcome to our Board of County Commission meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Sheriff Dan Coverley.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with general public comment this morning. Agenda item number three. This is for any matter that we have jurisdiction over. We are limited to three minutes and we have a timer up here that'll have a little ding when you have 30 seconds left and then a bigger ding when your time is up and the red light will come on. If there's any comment on the liquor board item or consent calendar, we welcome you to come up at this time and make comment on those as well because we don't take comments separately on those items. But we do take comment on all of the action items on the administrative agenda. That said, we welcome you, Mr. Adam.
Good morning. Didn't Genoa Historic District Commissioners-
Would you go ahead and state your name?
Oh, Roger Adam. Didn't Genoa Historic District Commissioners reject a 60-foot 5G tower project just two years ago? Didn't Douglas Community Development approve a 60-foot ham radio transmitting tower at 265 Old Barn Road, Genoa, project number DP 25-0096, adjacent to my property's western border? Didn't I oppose the project by email and telephone to Community Development on the same day I received the mail design review notice? Didn't the project applicant's southern border neighbor refuse to sign documents approving the project even though prompted to do so twice by the project applicant? Aren't the project applicant's southern neighbor and myself by far the closest adjacent property owners to the tower's excavation site? Isn't the telescoping transmitting tower used and of questionable structural integrity compared to new steel or aluminum? Because of the tower's proximity to my and the applicant's southern neighbor's properties, couldn't a transmitting tower collapse, penetrate, damage our properties, and also start a fire? Didn't multiple Pioneer Trail subdivision property owners oppose the 60-foot tower? Won't at least six expensive Genoa Lakes Golf Course community residences not notified of the tower by the county who now have picturesque views of Job's Peak? Soon will have even better views of a gorgeous used 60-foot transmitting tower because of the empty lots between them and Old Barn Road. If 45 utility poles are prohibited in the Pioneer Trail's development, doesn't it make sense now for the county to approve a 60-foot tower? Given the preceding data, are adverse features and opposition comments to projects by property owners routinely ignored by Community Development when there are no CCRs? Why is the 60-foot tower project considered only a "minor design review"? And why must written comments be received no later than 10 days from the date of the Community Development notice sent by snail mail only to adjacent property owners? Are Douglas County employees required to eliminate vacations to 10 days? And does the post office never delay their mail? Isn't it also misleading when the "minor design review" notice refers to a massive ham radio telescopic transmitting tower as only a "retractable amateur radio antenna" and no design drawings or photos are included? When decisions are made by elected Douglas County Commissioners, don't taxpaying citizens at least have the option of voting for or against them based on their decisions? Do we have this option with unelected county bureaucrats when we don't perceive their decisions to be based on reasonable logic or consideration of potential adverse impacts on Douglas taxpayers? If I went over, thank you for listening tonight.
Good morning, Mr. Sheridan.
Good morning. Good morning, John Sheridan, for the record. Just to disclose, board member for the Gardnerville Rancho's General Improvement District, and I'm actually just here to speak on the topic related to my board position on Drayton Boulevard. The reason I'm here today to speak on Drayton Boulevard is we had two petitions come before our board for traffic calming devices due to safety concerns. I do believe one of those, although both are in the vicinity of Drayton Boulevard, I do believe one of those petitions is directly related to the non-construction of Drayton Boulevard. It is our board's understanding that Drayton Boulevard may be eliminated due to having to work out closing the development agreements. We do not recommend that. We do still believe that it's a secondary access for Rancho de Development. We did receive a petition. There are some serious safety concerns on Springfield Drive, which was never meant to be a collector road. It is a residential road. So although we only did receive a petition so far from Springfield Drive, I do believe on the horizon that we are going to see a petition from Pleasant View Drive as well. Manhattan Drive, the other petition that I don't believe, Drayton Boulevard would feed into Manhattan. Again, that's under the grid's purview and nothing that the county could do to eliminate due to the construction of Drayton Boulevard. I'm here today looking for assistance and collaboration, and I think anytime we can do that between the county and the grid, we can work for our constituents. Again, we don't believe Drayton Boulevard should be eliminated. However, we do believe and understand that it may need to be put off. But I think we do need to address the safety concerns that are coming up. It's our understanding that the residents would not like speed bumps or speed cushions. They would like to see signage and some of the digital electronic signage. We spoke with the county manager, our county engineer, and I guess, and I'm just, this is hearsay, but something around 60K for four digital signs. And so we're looking to work together to address those safety concerns there. It would be a great deal to at least slow down the traffic that are using it as a cut through until we can construct Drayton Boulevard when it is needed, if it's not already needed. I just want to note, some of those residents that you guys stated did not want Drayton Boulevard are on the petition list, actually, for safety concerns. So I just want you to know, I do believe Drayton Boulevard is ultimately needed, but if it needs to be put off, can we just work together to address the safety concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Mr. Gibson.
Jason Gibson, on behalf of the House of Gibson, Douglas County Justice Coalition, civil litigant, civil rights litigant, here to address the agenda item with regards to the public administrators' reports. This is the public administrators' reports that you'll be accepting today, which is in regards to the probate matters of the peoples of Douglas County.
You can wait until that action item is heard?
Going to serve the, I won't be here for the remainder of the session. I don't want my time stolen again. Thank you. I'm going to put on the record that recently Brooke Eady and her co-administrators with Compassionate Services, who took an oath to faithfully perform according to the law the duties of co-administrator, and that all matters stated in any position or paper filed with the court by her are true of her own knowledge, or if any matters are stated on information and belief that she believes them to be true, that she knowingly, intentionally, and willingly falsified information which regards to the probate matters of Jason Gibson, the House of Gibson, and Sandra Gibson, where she knowingly, intentionally, and willingly populated the file with false information in order to evict us, serving us with a five-day eviction notice, where we would have lost our family heirlooms and our property. We would have been evicted and on the streets within five days. It's piracy, it's theft. It's the same maladministrative practices as Stephen Walsh. It's the intent of JLEC stakeholders to run the House of Gibson into the ground and destroy me and my family. It's the intent of Mark Jackson through his representative Douglas Ritchie to censor and omit our exhibits on the record like he did in May and June. And then when we asked him to return our personal properties, papers, and effects, he refused to do so. That's theft. These documents are going on the record today, along with the default notice maladministration of due process, along with the summary of what's going to happen tomorrow when they try to convict me on a crime I didn't commit through Ron Elges's wife, where they're going to try to commit me to an inpatient treatment program so they can pirate our estate. That's what they're doing here today. We have a commissioner over here who's running for attorney general that claims to be representing justice, who hasn't lifted a finger to defend us or respond to our claims. You all should be ashamed of yourselves, every single one of you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to take a minute to bring something to your attention.
Can you state your name?
Yes, sir. I already signed in. Charles Heffernan in Johnson Lane. So last fall, you had a chance to stop the Painted Ryan Rock Mine. Decided not to do that, decided to enter into an agreement with NOx that you thought would benefit the county. And I get that, and there's nothing we can do about that at this point. However, NOx continues today to be violating that agreement, flouting that agreement in the face of the county, and has seemingly no regard for honoring that agreement in full. There are some things that they may be, but even this morning, between 6:30 and 7:00, at least eight trucks accessed the mine site in violation of that agreement. They continue to leave the mine site with no coverings in violation of county and state rules, and I've written the state and the county, and nobody wants to do anything about that for some reason. I don't know why, but that seems to be a real sticking point. And it's not just the NOx trucks, it's also the third-party trucks as well. The trucks have limited their speeds on Johnson Lane according to the speed limits. I will give them that. And I appreciate the feedback signs that have been put out there. It seems to be helping. There is one water truck that's owned by NOx that continues to violate the speed limit, but that be at may, the rest of the trucks seem to be going pretty well. There are other things with respect to laws that I wrote to end up. It's more in their jurisdiction, but that is also yours because in the agreement, you require them to follow state law, and they are not. So there is dust everywhere going, they don't water the dirt roads down before the trucks start accessing the mine. So there are a lot of violations out there, and I just, I would really like to ask you at least, it's not a good agreement, but at least enforce this agreement, please, in full. So that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Sir, I didn't catch your last name.
Heffernan.
Heffernan. Thank you. And I, well, we have the opportunity to respond, and we'll make a short response after we finish public comment.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is a response to public comment. What I will tell you is the county is very active in monitoring. All of the county commissioners are very concerned. We talked to the county manager about this and will continue to do so. And I very much appreciate that you monitor, that you report, that you're talking to state agencies that have control, and I very much appreciate you being involved, as I think I speak for all of us. And we do expect that we will have more in the near future on the part of the county, more dialogue and information. I think that's, I think that's accurate to say at this point in time. Yes. Commissioner Tarkanian.
So this is something that a lot of the commissioners have been involved in. Personally, I have been. I know Mr. Tolbert has been in communication with people, and I know you're going to get frustrated when you say that we're not doing anything when we are, there are certain things we are trying to do. For example, the cover on the trucks has been an issue that I discussed, and there isn't a code that requires a cover on the trucks. It just requires that there not be debris flying out of there. And there has been some pictures of some debris coming out, but there's going to be a discussion on all this stuff. And anyways, what I'm trying to get at is, we're working to try to get this thing enforced as best as possible. We're going to have an agenda item pretty soon to discuss what we are doing to enforce it, and certainly open any suggestions people have that can improve upon it. And we're going to try to do the best. I think the whole board feels that way. I feel for you guys out there. I wouldn't want to live with all those trucks driving by either. But there is a limitation of what we can do. I also think that NOx, as when this thing was approved, was represented as being a great community partner. He should try to work with the neighbors out there also to make this as smooth as we can. Anyways, in our agenda item, we're going to try to discuss ways to get to that point.
Yes. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on from that. Yes. Deputy District Chief, Deputy District Attorney, Doug Ritchie.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. I'd like to just remind the public that opening public comment is for those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. In plain English, that means they can do something about it. A court's determination of someone's mental competency is not within their jurisdiction, nor is an eviction notice within their jurisdiction control. That's within the purview of the courts. Same thing with issues regarding a probate or a state matter. That's solely within the court's jurisdiction, not this Board of County Commissioners. And I would also indicate to members of the public that if there are legal pleadings that want to be served upon the county, attempting to serve the county at a public forum is not insufficient, it's insufficient service of process. You need to follow the rules of civil procedure if you want to effectuate service. In other words, follow a legal process. You need to do that rather than come in public forum and open public comment. The board is always open to hear concerns from citizens, but again, it's within the jurisdiction control of the Board of County Commissioners. And if there are legal pleadings or arguments that need to be made, they need to be made in court. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. Moving on to agenda item number four, approval of agenda.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
I move for the approval of the proposed agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Commissioner Gardner has moved, and Commissioner Tarkanian seconded, approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Approval of previous minutes, discussion to approve the draft minutes of the June 25, 2025 special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the draft minutes as presented.
Seven.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert, seconded by Commissioner Rice, that we approve the draft minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. We will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. Agenda item seven, for possible action, discussion to approve the name change of an existing package retail liquor license, onsite unrestricted license, caterer's liquor license, entertainment endorsement, and a non-restricted gaming license for Harvey's Tahoe Management Company, LLC, doing business as Caesar's Republic Lake Tahoe. Harvey's Tahoe Management Company, LLC, doing business as Caesar's Republic Lake Tahoe, is located at 18 Highway 50, State Line, Nevada 89449. Captain Stork.
Good morning, Captain Stork. Douglas County Sheriff's Office, for the record, this applicant has completed all the required paperwork and background checks, and the sheriff's office is not opposed to this applicant.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rice.
I move that we approve the name change of the existing package retail liquor license, onsite unrestricted license, caterer's liquor license, entertainment endorsement, and a non-restricted gaming license for Harvey's Tahoe Management Company, LLC, doing business as Caesar's Republic Lake Tahoe, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Gardner, that we approve this liquor license. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Do we have a representative from the business? Okay. Well, we wish them well. Moving to the consent calendar. Oh, yes. We will adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners and move to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Commissioner Gardner.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the consent agenda as presented, items A through S.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert, that we approve consent agenda items A through S. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Administrative agenda under Finance, agenda item 11, for possible action, discussion to approve the fiscal year 2024-25 internal audit plan as submitted by Baker Tilly, formerly Moss Adams, and presented to the Douglas County Audit Committee on August 5, 2025. For this item, we will look to Kathy Lewis, our chief operating officer.
Kathy Lewis, for the record. Today, we have in-person, which is a treat, representatives from Baker Tilly, former Moss Adams. I have Haley Garcia in the audience, Chelsea Ritchie, sorry. And I'll turn over to Haley to go through their presentation.
Hello. Haley Garcia, for the record. Thank you for having me today. It's a pleasure to be able to see you all again in person. We presented this two days ago to the Audit Committee. And this is our internal audit program that's proposed for this fiscal year ending 2026. I'm going to go over a quick introduction to who Baker Tilly is as your internal auditors, talk about the components, high level of an internal audit function for the county, and then present the internal audit program. As an overview, Baker Tilly serves as a designated internal auditor for the county, and as part of that, we assess risks, internal controls, compliance, and performance across the county through carrying out an internal audit program each fiscal year that focuses on those areas that may be considered higher risk or have the biggest opportunity for reward, having improvements for efficiencies and effectiveness and overall performance. Our work is conducted in compliance with AICPA consultancy standards. So as I mentioned, we do a variety of different types of projects, assessing risk in certain areas and identifying whether the county has processes and controls in place to mitigate those risks. We do tests of internal controls in key areas such as inventory, fixed assets, cash receipts, to test the internal controls and see if they're operating effectively. We look at compliance many times with Douglas County policies and procedures, as well as federal or state or other grant agreement compliance. And then we also look at performance. So are certain functions operating as efficiently, effectively as they can be? Each year, we identify, along with management and based on the internal audit function, including the enterprise risk assessment that was done last fiscal year, to say where are the highest priorities to focus internal audit resources this year. We have developed this audit plan. The first one is the inventory internal controls review. So looking at how the county is managing inventory across all the different sites that maintain inventory. So that can be vehicle parts, overall work supplies, it could be medication at some of the locations, food inventory, and other. So looking at those internal controls and are they designed effectively? In some cases, are they functioning effectively? The second one is the follow-up on grand jury report. There were, the most recent grand jury audits occurred in 2017, 18, and 2019, 20. And to be proactive and responsive, having us as an outside party coming in and looking at the recommendations that were made in those prior reports and saying, has the county addressed the risks or the concerns that were identified? Or are there certain areas where additional work may need to be done in the coming fiscal year? Third is policy and procedure support. The county is very dedicated to having updated, comprehensive, well-controlled policies that govern the significant functions of the county, and we are providing outside support and making sure that they are making progress in that process of getting to updated, comprehensive policies. Fourth is quarterly cash counts. We did this about two years ago, did not perform them last year. We're performing them again this year, where we go to about three to five cash receipting locations across the county that are randomly or judgmentally selected, and we go and show up unannounced and count their cash that's on hand, reconcile that to their receipts and their records, and evaluate for a variety of internal controls to see, are they properly and appropriately managing cash for the county? And last is ongoing internal audit services, which is coming and presenting and keeping you all updated, and the Audit Committee working hand-in-hand with management throughout the year and monitoring the county's fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. This is just a different picture of it, laying out the timeline. We're hoping to get started on the first two projects here, right after, hopefully, the audit plan is approved, and carry those out during this next quarter. The others will be performed ongoing throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. That is it. Thank you.
Kathy Lewis, for the record. Again, I do want to state Haley had mentioned that we presented the plan to the Audit Committee on Tuesday. They did approve to forward the plan to you guys at the board today for approval. Commissioner Tolbert is your representative on that committee.
Thank you. And we're happy to have you here in person, both of you. Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Gardner.
It's not really a question. I know that it's more of a statement, really. Our public, with the change of the federal administration, talked about heavily within our public, is the need for a Department of- is the need for a Department of Government efficiency within our county. And when I point out to them privately all the aspects of our internal processes, I think we, I think, for lack of that term, we do have that process taking place. I would like to mention, first of all, that we do have an Audit Committee, and that goes through that thing. Baker Tilly is an outside auditor for outside oversight. We have our annual audit that's required of us. We have our balanced budget that's required by the state, by us. Even though we allocate funds in our balanced budget on an annual basis, we also, items that are allocated still have to come to this board for actual approval to be spent. Is that right? Okay. And then, we also, an important aspect, an important aspect that we need the public to be aware of and utilize if they suspect it is our waste, fraud, and abuse hotline. So, those are, those are the internal controls that we have put in place to ensure that we have government oversight and government efficiency. So, that's all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
We'll turn now to public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? I will close public comment and note that there's not a big outcry for Doge here, so that's good. Then, is there a motion or any, are there any further comments? All right. Then let's have a motion. Commissioner Tolbert.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2425 internal audit plan as submitted by Baker Tilly, as presented to the Douglas County Audit Committee on August 5, 2025.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, that we approve this report. All, this plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie's unanimously. Yes.
Sorry, we do have one correction in that we did put the wrong fiscal year in the motion. I think we said 2425, but it's really 2526 plan. Sorry, we noticed that at the Audit Committee and I meant to correct it here, too. Sorry about that.
I think we can note that is what was intended. Thank you. All right, good work. Agenda Item 12 for Possible Action. Discussion to accept the Douglas County Public Administrator's Quarterly Reports for the first and second quarters of 2025. Brooke Ady, Community Services Director.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to talk about the quarterly reports for the public administrator. My name is Brooke Ady. I'm the Community Services Director, and I am joined with, by me Wendy Sharp, who is the appointed public administrator. And I'm going to hand it over to her to start with giving some updates, and then we're happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Helps if you turn it on. Good morning, Commissioners. Wendy Sharp, Public Administrator. Glad to join you this morning. So, in intro to talking about the submitted quarterly reports, I just want to start out with some gratitude. Since I started this position May 27, I have received so much support from the families of the estate cases that we are working on and also from internally from Brooke Ady, our Community Services Director, Ryan Stanton, the Community Services Deputy Director, Cynthia Gregory, our District Attorney, Ginger Simpson of Compassionate Solutions, Casey Myers and Sally Gonzalez of the Public Guardians Office, as well as the Parks guys, the crew there. Everyone has just been very supportive. And it's through this collaboration that we are making progress, and I'm very confident in this team's ability to clear this backlog. So, you'll see that I submitted to you today the quarterly reports for the first and second quarters of 2025 for your review and approval. In the first quarter, which ended March 31, there were 69 active estate cases with 17 requiring further investigation due to unknown statuses. In the second quarter, which ended June 30, there were 54 active cases, which shows our office successfully was able to close 17 cases, which after investigations revealed the estate was either privately administered or that we could find no assets or remains for the estate. I also want to point out that I'm counting cases in all stages, including those who are in the very beginning investigatory process as active cases. Then I also want to point out that NRS 253.0405 gives authority to the public administrator to identify and secure all tangible and intangible assets of the estate. Although I have found it necessary for most cases to file a special administration to obtain certain needed documents from banks and other such places that are necessary for our research, we are finding that many of our cases, especially the older ones that had some work done by my predecessor, can ultimately be completed by filing an affidavit of entitlement, which requires no court hearings. Affidavits of entitlement are for estate cases where the total value is $25,000 or less. Other than that, the cases that can be completed by affidavit, our cases mostly fall between set aside, which are estates valued between $25,000 and $100,000, or summary administration, which are estates valued between $100,000 and $300,000. There's only a small handful of cases which are valued over $300,000, which would require being filed under general administration. And I'm sorry if I read through that a little bit too quickly, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have some questions.
Very good, thank you.
And I can't, I don't, I read your reports, but I can't pull up my packet at the moment. So, I don't have the numbers at my fingertips. But one of my concerns prior to your taking this position was the number of inventories that had not been done on estates. And I wondered if you could explain to us how many of these cases or estates have inventories prepared and filed? Or what your process is and where you're at on that?
Brooke Ady, Community Services Director. What kind of tag team on some of the questions? Because I've done some, and then she's done some. Currently, the public administrator's case has four properties that were in the process of managing. The properties that we have, we have gone in and we've taken videos and we've done our own inventories. Not all of them have been filed because they're in various statuses. Some of the previous cases that were administered by the prior, sorry, public administrator. He had filed some inventories on some of those properties. Some of the properties we no longer have, they have been sold, and some of the assets have been dispersed. But any of the properties that we have taken over, we have gone in and redone the inventories. Minus one case that was, we're kind of in limbo. And I don't know how much I can get in details as far as names and all of that, but.
No, we don't need names.
Okay.
But when you say four properties, do you mean out of all these estates, there's only four pieces of real estate?
Correct. That is correct.
But you do inventories even when there isn't real estate involved?
That is correct. So, for example, we had a case where the individual was living in an apartment. So, we went into the apartment and we took video and we took inventory, and we have records of all of that. We have body cams that we'll wear when we go into the property so that we're filming everything that's being done. So, that is part of our process. We also have four travel trailers, and we've done inventories on those as well.
Great. So, one of the concerns, of course, the reason you do inventories is to secure and account for all of the assets in between the time that you receive the case and it's, everything's dispersed.
That, Brooke Ady, Community Services Director. It also helps provide us with some information on what the estate is valued at, so then we know if we need to do a small affidavit estate or a summary. So, that is also a part of why we do the inventory of all bank accounts, things like that.
Right, so you know which process to use?
Correct.
Yes. So, I guess I want to ask, typically, how long between receiving a case does it take until an inventory is prepared and filed?
So, when the public administrator receives a referral or a case from the Sheriff's Department, that first 30 days is really our opportunity to do some investigating of, do they have a next of kin? Where are the families? What are the bank accounts and assets? So, we, within that first 30 days or shortly thereafter, we will go in and do an inventory of the property. But we typically go in right away and see what kind of documentation we can gather that helps us in our search.
And so, in addition to doing an inventory, you also secure everything right off the bat, right?
Correct. So, we have keys, vehicles to all the properties, yes.
Do you change locks? Or how do you make sure that you are the only people who have control of these things?
We have not changed the locks on the properties. We do go by periodically and do inspections and make sure that nothing is being touched and that everything is secure. If there are concerns with any of the properties, like neighbors will call and say, you know, we think somebody's getting into the house. And we go up and we've boarded up some of the houses, so they weren't able to get in. We've put in additional locks.
Great, I'm almost done.
Okay.
And what, can you describe to us where you're keeping personal property assets? And kind of what your process is on that?
Brooke Ady, Community Services Director. So, we have, there's a couple ways. So, some of the individuals' estates that we're responsible for had storage units already. So, we've been able to go into the storage unit, transfer the unit into our, like, the estate of, and then we can take over making the payment so that their assets are secure. And if we're clearing out any property, we would add to their storage unit. So, we have a couple of those. We have also created a secure public administrator lot where we have a couple of conex boxes where we store some individuals' belongings if they don't have a storage unit, or, and vehicles, and travel trailers. And that is under video surveillance.
Wonderful to hear about this. The security, the orderliness that these estates are being received and handled. So, thank you very much for those answers. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Gardner?
I had a quick question. So, we have, it appears on these reports, and thank you very much for the reports, very detailed, the affidavit of entitlement. Substantial amount of those in both of the reports, first quarter and then the second quarter. When we do that, those do not become closed cases? When we issue those? That's.
An affidavit is one method to which we're able to work on the estate and then close it. So, we had a large number of estates where a small amount of funds had been held back to file income taxes. And so, because there's only $100 or $200, they don't need to have full general administration. So, we do an affidavit. We get the taxes filed, and then we would be able to close out after that.
Okay. So, that's fairly a quick process then compared to the other issues.
Yeah, that is correct. At that point, most of the assets have been distributed or properties sold, and we have a very small amount left.
Okay, so the affidavit of entitlement are still included in the active cases number?
Yeah, that is correct. That is correct. We count, our active counts as anybody that we're still doing work on, we're investigating. It doesn't necessarily mean they've gone before the judge and we've, they've been heard, but we're gathering information, too. So, there's a lot of work to be done even before it gets to the judge.
Okay. You took on a task of heavy lifting here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rice.
Coming from a law enforcement background, when you go into a property, do you take someone with you? To verify? You hear the horror stories about, oh, my, my wife had a Hope Diamond. It was at least 200 carats, and now it's gone. And gee, we can't find it. I think that the administrator must have taken it.
Yeah.
So, what are your safeguards against those type of accusations?
Brooke Ady, Community Services Director. So, we did buy body cams, so we could wear body cams when we go in. And we do dual custody for everything. Nobody goes into a property by themselves. And so, we always have two people that are going in and doing the inventory. And even, even when we're doing our checks to make sure that the properties are okay, we always do it in pairs.
And I guess my concern, of course, would be individuals who arbitrarily occupy the property inappropriately or not legal. So, I would hope that you're safeguarding yourselves from that occurrence as well, right?
Yeah, if there is a situation in which we are unsure of the safety of the residents, we have called non-emergency dispatch, and DCSO has provided a sheriff's officer to come along with us.
Great, thank you. Let's turn to.
Hold on, I've got mine, too. I've been waiting patiently. I've been overlooked because I'm all the way down here.
Shy me in, please. Commissioner Tolbert.
Basically, just to wrap up, I think, what everybody's alluding to here. And I know you're new to the process, but can you, in an attempt to protect you from claims of impropriety, do you have a best management practice? And/or is there state law that you specifically follow so that you can answer to the processes you follow, saying this is the procedure we do? Because I'd just like to be able to have something that said, look, this is how we do it every time, and here's documented how we, how we followed said procedures. That would include the body cams and that kind of stuff.
Right. I'll answer some of that, and then I'll let Wendy enter the piece on the NRS. We are working on some policies and procedures. So, Compassionate Care Solutions, which is Ginger Simpson. She is the public administrator for Nye County, has been an immense amount of support to us in really educating us on how to handle many of the cases. The public administrator is, no case, two cases are the same, so we can have some general policies, but it's not a one shoe fits all. So, that is something that we are working on, and we're getting a lot of support from Ginger. Also, our attorney Neil Falk that we have been working with has been a really great resource in helping us, you know, look at what the NRS says and providing some very clear guidance on how we move forward. We talk with him on a daily basis and meet with him very regularly, so we know what we need to do to move forward. So, all of the things that we're doing right now and a lot of learning is helping us drive our process for developing those policies and procedures. And then I'll let Wendy talk about the NRS.
Yes, Wendy Sharp, Public Administrator. I actually created this little binder that I keep with me, and it has the Nevada Law for Public Administrators and probate administration. So, first and foremost, I use the Chapter 253 of the NRS, which is specifically for public administration of estates, for public administrators and also public guardians. We also have, like, the degrees of kinship for the rules for civil law. We have the Nevada Civil Practice Manual 34.01, which is in regards to estates of deceased person. And then also Chapter 39, which is also for estates of deceased person. So, keeping, keeping the laws close to hand because we definitely have to consult with those regularly.
Any other questions or comments? Well, we can do comments later, but, all right. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? I'm hearing in my mind a loud round of applause for the good work you're doing from the public, who are not here to say that, but I know they would be. And I'm getting head nods, so there we are. Thank you, thank you very much. With that, is there a motion?
I'll go for it. Madam Chair, I move that we accept the Douglas County Public Administrator's Quarterly Reports for the first and second quarters of 2025.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert, seconded by Commissioner Rice, that we accept these reports. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's unanimously. Thank you, both, very much. All right.
All right, Emergency Management, Agenda Item 13 for presentation only, introduction of ordinance 2025-1658, amending Douglas County Code, Chapter 3.50, surcharge for enhancement or improvement of telephone system used for reporting emergency, increasing the membership of the Douglas County 911 Surcharge Advisory Committee from five to seven members. We have Kara Easton here with us, who is our Emergency Man Manager.
Man Manager, maybe.
Emergency, what is it? What's the name of it? Director of Emergency Management. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Kara Easton, for the record, do you have any questions on this item?
Commissioner Rice.
I have no questions, but I think that the people that don't understand the process might have a question about why we are increasing the numbers. This is not something that we thought up, it was thought up for us. So if you would address that.
Sure, so I might butcher this, so I may ask Doug Ritchie to step in. Per NRS, that's how we determine how many committee members we have. And right now, you have to have five committee members and they all have to be residents of Douglas County. So we are increasing membership because we sometimes have difficulty finding members who also fit the, I'm going to say it wrong, the ILEC, Incumbent Local Exchange Carrier requirement. So if we still, if we have seven members, then we can satisfy the five members that are Douglas County residents, but then also be able to get somebody who may be ILEC that is not residing in Douglas County.
All right, this is introduction of the ordinance, so we are not taking action or taking public comment on this, but thank you for being here to present this. All right. Agenda Item 14 for presentation only, announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to, or any other meetings, functions they have attended, and any requests by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. Commissioner Tolbert.
No, I don't have anything new, other than that we're already talking about the update on the Painted Rock Mine.
Commissioner Tarkanian.
The only thing that was new was the groundbreaking, which I'm sure everybody would like to discuss, but it was really wonderful. The Mola Parkway groundbreaking. Justice said, there he goes, one of those two.
Commissioner Rice.
Okay, I've been busy. I had a very lengthy TRPA meeting. The one good thing about the TRPA meetings is they actually beat us and, which is not all that bad. Anyway, the, yeah. Anyway, so I had a TRPA meeting. I had a solid waste management meeting. Since I've been a commissioner, I've learned more about trash and affluent than I ever wanted to know. And the Bear Box Program is still alive and well at Lake Tahoe, even though they have now gone to what they call totes, where they have the truck come by, it grabs it. And one of the questions I had for the Waste Management Company was, I've had some comments from people saying that they're, they're lying to us because one truck comes up the road and they take everything. And on the Nevada side, at the moment, it's true. They don't have the number of trucks that they need, but what they do is they take it back to their main office and they sort through all this by hand, which is a job, I don't know about you, but I wouldn't want it. But the recyclables are gleaned from the trash that is deposited there. And the Tahoe Summit yesterday was absolutely, I won't say incredible, because I heard some very negative comments about the way that we're treating the lake, which in my opinion are not correct at all. The different organizations around the lake, including the League to Save Lake Tahoe, the Sierra Club, all of these are working together more so than they ever have. And we don't have the friction between different isms at the lake that we had before. And the TRPA, at least in my opinion, has become a kinder, gentler organization under the guidance of the administration, the new administration, well, newer administration. And other than that, I didn't do a darn thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as it turns out, I missed the Chamber Board meeting yesterday morning because I was at the Tahoe Summit. So anyways, so I have nothing to report for the chamber. There are a couple of events that I would like to call attention to for our community. Number one is that tomorrow night, 4:00 to 8:00, at the Ironwood Center is National Night Out and it will be featured in our Sheriff's Department. So I want the public to take advantage of that opportunity, come out and visit with our Sheriff's Department at National Night Out at the Ironwood Center. Secondly, I did find out that yesterday Congressman Amade worked with a national architect and chose a local tree out of our local forest for the national tree that will, the national Capitol tree that will go to Washington, DC. This is the first time in Nevada's history that a Christmas tree will come out of our local forest and represent Nevada. To that end also, I want to make sure that I recognize our staff led by Rachel Evanson in regards to creating the, our portion. There are 17 counties in the state and each county has been asked to provide a section of a tree skirt that will go around the tree. And unfortunately, we don't have a picture of it. Maybe we should do that before we, maybe later on. Obviously, we don't have it today, but maybe we can get a picture for the public to see or maybe even advertise that in the Record Courier. But anyways, I wanted to thank Rachel and leading staff and that. It's an incredible skirt, so I appreciate that. And I think, I think that's it, so.
Thank you. I also wanted to note the Justice Center groundbreaking and just comment that it was very well organized and many kudos to Kathy Lewis and Jennifer Davidson for their good work on that. It was very well done. I also wanted to note that I went to the Heritage Park Gardens ribbon cutting. That is a very inspiring place and the Main Street Gardenerville has just done an exemplary job in, in that work, as well as all the many, many, many volunteers who have stepped up and, and contributors, financial contributors. I wanted to acknowledge Commissioner Tolbert's good idea to support the Little League 12U team that went to the state tournament and they represented us very well. I have, I've gone to several meetings, including Carson Water Subconservancy District, and I also wanted to mention with appreciation Chief Alan Ernst. Commissioner Tolbert and I met with him and had a very good productive meeting. I am looking forward to the agenda item on Painted Rock Mine. I feel like there's a lot of information that will benefit everyone to be in the know. And if there's nothing else, then I will.
I got one, I wanted to follow up. I forgot one thing, a very important. This will make a lot of residents in Douglas County happy, particularly the ones on Johnson Lane and one of the residents who spoke earlier, but this entire board has to go to jail after this meeting.
Yes, County Manager Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I appreciate the time to add to your report. I just have a couple of housekeeping things. The first is it takes a team to do the Justice Center groundbreaking and we had many individuals involved in the County Manager's Office. Kathy and I could not have done what we, the little pieces that we did, it was a full team effort. So thank you to everyone who was involved. Additionally, for members of the public, if you were not able to attend, we will be adding some video information onto the county's project webpage and updating all the information there, so you can watch the full 30-minute ceremony as well as a one-minute highlight reel if you don't have time to spend 30 minutes. But it was a historic event and we're very, very proud of the work that we are doing in continuance of our strategic planning goals and objectives. So yay for that. With that, Madam Chair, I'm back and conclude my remarks.
Thank you for that. I will just elaborate on what Commissioner Tarkanian said, which is we are taking the annual tour of the jail that we are required to take under NRS. And it's a good thing, it's a good thing. All right, moving to Agenda Item 15, closing public comment. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and this meeting is adjourned.